All right. So, welcome to the City of Treasure Island Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for November 20th, 2025. If you wish to speak on a topic which is on today's agenda, a speaker's card is available on the table over to my left by the entrance and must be completed and given to the chairperson. Please do not address the board from your seat, but rather from the podium where your comments can be heard by all and recorded as required by Florida statute. Unscheduled topics may be presented under the public comments section of the agenda. If everybody would please silence their cellphones and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Tia, if we could have a roll call.
Gary Potenziano.
Yeah.
Ross Sanchez.
Here.
Chris Downing.
Here.
Grant Smith.
Here.
Marvin Shavelin.
Here.
Richard Harris.
Here.
Thank you.
And I assume that Mark and Daniel, or did they say they weren't going to be here?
I did not hear from Mark, but Daniel and Valerie both did tell me they were going to be absent.
Okay.
I apologize for missing the last meeting. I think it's an excused absence due to the date being moved, so I apologize to the board for that. I usually plan these out a year in advance, so my apologies.
All right, the minutes from February 20th. Any comments, or could I have a motion to approve those?
To approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, they're approved. Prior cases, anything changing?
My apologies, I did not have a chance to get around to the status update sheet that we normally have. Next month, I will have that to you. I can give you an update of like future ones for next month, or we can wait until after we talk about next month's meeting at the end of the...
Hit us with next month. Take it away.
So, next month's P&amp;Z, which is going to be December 18th, we're looking at about two to three cases. Those will be variances for stairs and setbacks. And then some other future cases, we have a site plan for ten dwelling units, and that's also going to come along with a plat. And then another site plan for three townhomes, of course, that would be platted as well. And then we have a site plan for a coffee shop with an outdoor dining area, and then a variance for a single-family residence setback, and then a variance for a pool, and then another variance for stairs. And we have about, I'm not quite sure in the numbers, but I know we do have a lot of DRC meetings scheduled coming up, and typically those usually lead into some type of case coming for the Planning and Zoning Board. So, I believe we have nine of these scheduled, so that would lead up to nine more. I think a lot of those are variances, but I'm not sure exactly what those meetings would be about.
I know a lot of folks are calling me about raising houses and DRCs. I just explain to them, hey, try to keep your front balcony to three foot wide, your back balcony to five foot wide, and your steps in the front to a five-foot encroachment. I mean, is that being, I think most of these raised houses can work within those limitations. I mean, are you getting that impression? I know there's some really weird ones out there, like Barb Adams's lot, which is as regular as can be, so I just, you know, people spending a quarter million bucks to raise a old house, we just need to help them any way we can.
Yeah, yeah, like as you know, we passed those couple ordinances for like the balconies to encroach, the meter platform, and then also we do have like the setback factor thing, so like if you do bring in fill to help elevate, there's like calculations you can do that allow you also to encroach as much as possible, depending on how much fill is brought in on site.
So, Richard, I do have an item that I want to bring up during the new business discussion here.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, I'd like to make sure, you know, that Jesse, you're around, because we may have some questions when we have discussion on that item. Will you be here for the whole meeting today?
For the LPA?
Right. No, just P&amp;Z today. You'll be...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be here today.
All right, we can talk about that then, then, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no problem.
Well, refresh my memory, and for the watching audience, if there are any, what is the latest on a Duke Energy platform? How far in a side yard setback can a Duke Energy platform go in?
So, it's limited by the width, which is, I believe the standard is three-foot stair width.
Three-foot stairs, five-foot platform.
Yeah, so the width of the stairs pretty much dictates the encroachment. If I recall, Jackie, she is here, Jackie gave her, there was a representative for Duke Energy, I'm not sure if they touched on anything else about platforms, I'll ask Jackie to come up and see.
And this question's for a lifted or being raised house, correct? Not a brand-new construction, correct, Chair?
Well, and it's really the new construction that I would want to bring up its new business later today regarding this, because of whether we want to get into that now or later, it's up to you, Chair.
Well, let's get into it later. We've got people in the audience that are here for their cases, so let's get into that a little later. Yeah, Jackie, we need to talk at you anyway, so we'll talk to you later. Anyway, let's say, hearing procedures. City Attorney, you got anything you need to tell us?
Well, first of all, my name is Nancy Stuparich, and I'm an attorney with the Voss Law Firm. We are very honored to be here working with Treasure Island, and me today working with you as the Planning and Zoning Board. I'm not going to tell you that I'll be here at your next meeting, it might be Ralph Brooks. I think some of you may have seen him at the city commission meeting this past Tuesday. I think you all are pretty seasoned on the conduct of quasi-judicial hearings, so just very briefly, I'll say a few words to fulfill the agenda item. So, today before you, you have a variance, you have a special exception, and you have a site plan. These type of land use approvals have been determined by Florida courts to be quasi-judicial in nature. So, what that means is that your hearing on these items is going to be just a little bit more formal than the remainder of your meeting. And the reason for that is these individuals are coming forward to you and asking you to make some changes to their private property rights as far as the regulations that are imposed upon them, or the requests that they're asking to change. So, because of that, there's some basic fundamental due process considerations. The first is that the property owner received notice of today's hearing, and generally when they're present, they've gotten notice, right? Also, that, the second component would be that the city staff has actually applied the correct part of the land development code to the request that has been provided. And lastly, and this is where your responsibility really comes in, there is criteria that is established in your code, and your job, your responsibility today is to make a determination if that criteria has been satisfied based on evidence and testimony that is given to you today. You can vote, the majority would of course vote for approval, there might be some conditions attached to that. In the event that the majority votes for a denial, you do need to set forth what the basis for that denial is. The denial should be based on the lack of competent substantial evidence, testimony, or documents that a criteria item has not been satisfied. It should not be based on an opinion or mere flaws that you might have. I know we don't have too many in the audience today, but that can happen sometime. And with that said, I do want to mention that the courts have found that testimony by experts has been viewed as competent evidence to show that a particular criteria has been satisfied, but also testimony from residents who have personal knowledge and information about a particular criteria that might be before you for your consideration. I think with that said, I've kind of given you a summary. Again, we'll be a little bit more formal now, but then at the end of your meeting, once your quasi-judicial hearings have concluded, we'll go more into a legislative-type setting. So, Mr. Chair, I think at this point, it would be appropriate to go ahead and have the oath administered. Is it the clerk that is doing that?
Yes, it is. I did have one question for you, because this is something I, since you brought it up, you know, the testimony, this is just my past experience.
Yeah.
When you have a individual giving testimony of any type, is it appropriate to ask them their background, what their field of expertise is?
Yes.
Because obviously, if you are, oh, I'm going to pick on myself, and the other, we have one other engineer on the board here, too. We'll pick on these engineer types. If they're engineers, obviously, I feel that they, their testimony has a little more weight behind it. So, I always like to know what these people's field of expertise is. That's appropriate to ask?
Absolutely. In fact, I would even suggest that you go one step further, and that you take a vote or consensus that they are an expert on a particular area such as engineering. That really adds a lot more ability to defend a decision based on the testimony that they give you for that criteria.
Thank you. Okay, John Doctor, that one was for you. I hope you're listening. He's the mayor. Anyway, let's go ahead. Tia, if you would, if you were in the audience today and expect to speak on any of the cases, please be, stand and be sworn in.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give before the Planning and Zoning Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. Any ex parte communication on any of these three cases today? Seeing none, we'll keep on moving forward. Okay, first case, variance 000562-2025-11525 Gulf Boulevard, a marine variance to Section 69-71A5 to permit a 14-by-16 boat lift to encroach 14 feet into the 20-foot setback. The applicant is in the audience today, can you please approach the podium and state your case?
My name's Gary DeBalo from DeBalo Marine. Good afternoon, Planning and Zoning Board members. I want to thank you for being here today and doing your duty for the City of Treasure Island residents in this, in the city. I know some of you are longtime residents here. I did want to say that lately, the permitting has been going pretty well with Stephanie and Bianca and everyone we've been dealing with, that's been kind of nice compared to some of these other cities we've been dealing with. I thought you were going to do the, your presentation for the first.
Oh, I'm next.
Oh, okay.
Now, we actually let the applicant state his case first, because the problem in the past, and I must admit, I changed that, the city would make their recommendation, and a lot of times they'd recommend denial, and it puts you in a bad position.
Oh, I see.
So, you get to go first, and that is the reason why.
Well, I'm here today in behalf of my customer, Mrs. Nicolova and her family requesting, granting them a variance according to the code. According to the code, I was going to say that Jesse explained, but since they flopped it, we're putting a cradle lift, 16,000-pound cradle lift in an existing slip. There's 17 slips behind the condos, and it's number 17, which is on the end, and it's in this, inside the 20-foot setback. Even though it's an existing slip, all the other, you know, slip owners are able to have lifts without coming to a variance. Anybody have any questions, or?
Well, so, so the slip was existing prior to this request?
Yeah.
I see where you marked the two existing tie poles.
Yeah, that was the old Jolly Roger, if you remember, and then this is Catalina Grand. They built those, all those slips when they did the condos, 2005.
I see.
So, this is a better picture of it?
Yes.
Condo Association, it's got slips, the ones on the very end, like this is saying on the highlight, if you put a lift in, it's going to encroach on the setback.
Oh, I see that, yeah. The tie poles themselves are already in the setback.
Yeah, it's an existing slip, yes.
Existing slip. That, that's what I'm trying to get to the...
So, tie poles are allowed to be outside the setback, or like on this, like, when you have a house with tie poles, you can have that? It's the lift that's the problem?
Mm-hmm.
But that's why he's here for a variance.
So, there wasn't a previous variance to get the tie poles?
No. When they, when they, when they built the project, if, well, it's, it's not on there, but...
If you, if you and I lived right next to each other, I could put tie poles basically on my property line.
Yeah, that's the way the code reads.
Okay. Anywhere in the city.
No, I appreciate the clarification.
Now, I know.
I understand then how we got here.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a, I've got a poster board that I'd like to show, kind of old school, if that's okay? If there's any other questions? I do know Slip 1 was installed in 2019, and it did not have to go through a variance hearing, just, I guess it's somebody else's interpretation, but their nine-foot, 10 inches, or actually a little bit, right, right next to the tie poles, they're, what, like nine-foot, 10 inches away from the property line on the north side, and, excuse me. Extracurricular, kind of, sorry for the old-school presentation here. This is okay, you guys can see all this. Is that a good spot for this?
Yeah, it's correct.
Or somewhere else?
Perfect, yes.
All right, so, anyway...
You'll still have to talk to the microphone, though, unfortunately, for the benefit...
Let me pull it back a little bit. So, as you can see on the Catalina Grand condominiums, you've got Gulfport Boulevard in front, there's Building 1 and Building 2. This is the view looking down the north side of the property, it's got a retention area coming back, and there's the, you can see the lift that sticks out past the, the building setback, and of course, here's the property line. This is a view, the next picture down is a view from the north side property line looking down the seawall. The property width is, what is it, 303 feet altogether, and you can see the, all the lifts that are in. This is about halfway down, Slip Number 10, and there's another picture looking at the north side property line. This picture here is from the, is from the canal, the slip is right here, and this is the slip looking at, looking at the condo, and this, this property over here is Bayside Inn, you know, the hotel in Marina, and he's given us a notice of, a notarized letter of no objection next door, and they are the adjoining property owners. And then, of course, this is the right side property line that looks down, and you can see, that's, that's Slip Number 17, basically in the same position as this one, it's just going to be over a few more feet.
And there was no lift here prior to the storm?
No, there was no lift there prior to the storm.
And there are some of these slips already in the middle that don't have lifts on them?
Right, right.
Okay.
But I mean, there's nobody that has a boat that's sitting in the water.
Okay, let's let the man finish his presentation, and then we'll have time for questions.
Yeah.
Jeez, let's have a little crumb here.
And then, of course, this is, so that's looking at the slip from the, from the canal side, and then here you can see Base, Base Side Inn, and this is not a slip, that's right in between the two, the two slips. That's his first slip, which would be over here, and this is looking at the slip right here, looking north at the Marina, and you can see the other slips that are better in there. And, and that's actually the slip looking out from the property. And these two pictures here, I figured you'd like to see, I took these from the bridge, that's showing Bayside Inn here, Catalina Grand condos, and Estrada, and you can see, I mean, lift, putting a lift in that slip would be consistent with everything that's over there on that, on that side of the canal. I think I've explained the pictures and stuff, if y'all have any questions.
Okay, now's the time to ask questions. Go for it, people. I'm good, thank you.
Are the, are the boat slips attached to each unit, or are they sold separately? So, like if...
I, I think that, you know, when they bought the units originally, they had to buy the, I, I don't know exactly if they came with the units back then.
Okay.
But they had to purchase that, that slip.
I get that they had to purchase it, so I'm just curious if that unit, like if the, if, if Slip 17 is attached to that home that's in that property.
Well, it, it is now that she purchased it.
Okay.
You know, earlier this year.
Well, sometimes they're separate transactions, they're...
It is, it's, it's deeded separately, it's, it's taxed separately.
Yep, okay, understood. All right, thank you, I don't have any questions.
On the property to the south, immediately adjacent to it, I see that there are dock tie piles there. Are there lifts on that property also?
On the south side, meaning the, the Marina?
Yeah.
The, there's a property adjacent to it to the south.
Yeah, Bayside Marina.
Does Bayside Marina have lifts?
They do have, they do have one lift, he has one lift, he just has slips because he rents the, you know, they rent, it's a hotel motel, so they rent, and then people bring their boats, obviously, but there's a, there is a lift in the very corner, I did, I have a picture of it, but they do have a lift on the, on their south end of their property.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
It's technically not a Marina, technically it's called a Marina on the sign, but it's not a Marina, to make that very clear.
Technically, it's not.
Because that's a different classification.
Okay, if you would have a seat, and we'll have the city staff give their presentation.
Mr. Chair, may I ask the board a question? So, you have been looking at some photographs, does the board want to enter those photographs into record, into the record?
Yes, we do.
Is there a motion for that?
Let's have a motion to enter that exhibit into the record as evidence.
I will make a motion to add the applicant's board of pictures into the record.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Good old-style presentation.
I'm glad you appreciate that. My daughter was laughing at me about it. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Jesse.
All right, so, just a reminder, yeah, this is case number VAR-000562-2025, which is a marine variance request to Section 69-71 subsection A5 to permit a 14-foot by 16-foot boat lift to encroach 14 feet into the 20-foot setback. And this is located 11525 Gulf Boulevard. Just like a little background, so the waterfront width is like 302 feet, there's two existing multifamily structures with a total of 20 dwelling units, and this allowed for nine multi-use private docks, of which have a combined total of 17 boat slips on this property. So, for lots greater than 60 feet, the minimum side setback is required to be 20 feet from the extended property yard lines. So, the, I already stated the applicant's request, but I do want to point out, it was brought to my attention in the staff report underneath the history and background, the applicant's requesting a variance to reduce their right side setback for a boat lift, that's actually should be by 14 feet, not 16 feet, so I'm going to have to adjust that before we get to development. before we get the development order. And then also from 20 feet to, that should say 6 feet, 6 and 1/2 feet, not 4 feet. So just a correction on the staff report on that one, I want to point out. And then, as you've already witnessed, this is the, the 17-slip dock layout. And then this is just a closer up, just showing you where that encroachment is actually going to be on the site. Okay, so staff's analysis, this is stated in Section 69, 69 dash 91. So criteria 1, the applicant does not appear to demonstrate through substantial competent evidence how a literal enforcement of the provisions of the city code would result in extreme hardship due to unique nature of the project and the applicant's property. Criteria 2, the variance being sought is not the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the applicant's property. The applicant will be able to continue to utilize a boat slip in its current configuration as a what boat slip without the granting of the requested variance. Criteria 3, the granting of the requested variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the chapter if the board finds that there is an extreme hardship due to the unique nature of the property and the variance request is the minimum variance that would make possible the reasonable use of the applicant's designated boat slip. The variance may create adverse effects on the adjacent properties, although the adjacent property owner did provide a signed letter of no objection, a variance would run with the land against future property owners. So staff's recommendation, staff recommends denial of a marine variance request to Section 69 dash 71 subsection A5 to permit a 14-foot by 16-foot boat slip to encroach 14 feet in a 20-foot setback based on the following criteria. The applicant has not demonstrated through substantial competent evidence that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the code would result in extreme hardship due to the unique nature of the project and the applicant's property. The variance being sought is not the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the applicant's property. The variance may create adverse effects on future adjacent property owners. And that is all I have, and staff's available for questions.
Jesse, you have a question?
One second, Ross. I, I'm chairman, I get to go first.
That's fine, have at it. I know you were going to ask the same question I am, so you might as well edit.
Anyway, I forgot my question, go ahead, Ross.
Classic, truly classic. He had asked, you should, you should ask the chairman first if he has any questions, then you can come to us.
Okay, next time.
In regards to Slip number 1, that is, has a lift that is over the setback, was there any historical data that you were able to find on how that was approved? I'm not basing my decision on it, I'm just curious, because I like symmetry, I get the property, so I was curious if you researched anything on Slip 1?
Yes, I did look up that permit. There was a letter that was provided by CDD, which stated that it was a preliminary approval, and they said they could put that boat slip in, but just, I'm not going to cut down staff, but they, staff member at that time might not have been aware that just 20-foot setback was in effect at that time.
All right, Marvin.
So, I'm not sure if this is for you or the city attorney. How does the letter from the neighbor play into this? I mean, obviously the neighbor doesn't have an issue with it, I mean, to me, there's no hardship here, but if the neighbor says it's not a problem, does that?
Well, it, it isn't specifically, again, we're not counting heads, how many for, how many against. However, it does, your criteria, I believe the very last one will be in harmony, the, one of the concerns that staff had was that it could create adverse effects on future adjacent property owners. So you, through the letter, you have an indication from the existing property owner that they don't, they disagree basically that it would have an adverse effect. So it's, it's information for you to consider.
Can we base our decision on something like that, or?
That, that information would go to one of the criteria that you, that your code contains. So it, it's persuasive if you believe that the letter is a true invalid letter, it hasn't been fabricated or, or anything to that effect. You haven't heard any testimony from anyone to negate that.
Jesse, is there any indication that there's, that the letter, I mean, does the letter seem to be legit?
Yeah, I have not received any complaints or negative feedback from any other neighbors that were, this was advertised.
It did have a.
Certification.
Certification, it was notarized.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our packet.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually.
So Jesse, let's just break this down for a second. If you, if Gary and I are neighbors, right, in a residential community, I'm building a dock or he's building dock, either or, and his lift is going to go over the setback, and I sign something, because I, I've done this before with residential, it technically wouldn't need a variance, it can kind of go through, right? In the, in the residential world?
That would be a variance that would just go along with the permit application.
It would go along with the permit application.
Yeah, that's because this is commercial, is why this has to come before the plan.
Okay, that, so that, that clarifies a lot for me, because I know that in the residential world, it could go through if both neighbors are, if one neighbor wants to build something and the other current neighbor signs off on it and it goes, I actually think you did that on your property. I had a neighbor do it for me in, in my last property, so this is because it's more of a commercial situation on how it's zoned and that's why it's.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, all right, interesting.
Jesse, could you be any, be more specific about the potential adverse effects that staff sees?
That could be, here, let me bring up the layout. So just like, if you look at this aerial image, so, say the applicant to the south, if this boat slip, I mean, if this boat lift was put in in Dock 17, and then the property owner on the south also would want to put one in as well, too, the property owner then to the north could be like, no, because we already have one that's already almost up next to the property line, and we would still want to keep a little bit of space in between them. So it would basically fall upon the property owners at that time if they would agree.
So it would prevent the property owner to south building a lift, it just would have to go through an agreement, and you have to have the permission of this applicant?
Yeah, so if the property to the south would come in and they would want to do this exact same thing, they could get a letter from this property owner saying like, no, we object to that.
And it would still be a variance?
Yeah, yeah, it would still have to come back for the planning.
And then future boards could look at it and say, well, a previous, I'm not saying you're basing their decision off previous board's decisions, but there's a history of, okay, well, they did it for this one slip that's adjoining to the property line, basically, the roles are reversed. Okay, interesting.
All right, anybody in the audience to speak to this case other than the applicant? Seeing none, I have no cards. Any comments that the applicant would like to make?
Yes.
I think it was, Ross, were you asking about, was somebody asking about a picture of the lift that's on the south property? Was that you?
This is one, and I believe I have the actual permits for this one and the permit for the, the north lift.
That was pulled and, and he pretty much, you know, said it, they, it was signed off without having to go through a, a hearing.
Hold it up for the camera.
Also wanted to give you a few more pictures, just to kind of let you know, they said there's no hardship, but I don't know if, if, you know, how many of y'all have boat lifts and live on the water, but if you have a, you know, a 60 to a $300,000 boat, you're not going to tie it up and leave it in the water. I mean, it's just not going to happen, especially if it's new. I'd like to give you all some pictures from this past storm. And this is the exact type of lift we're going to be putting in.
Jeez. You burned a whole ink cartridge on this presentation.
Yeah, you know what? I'm kind of old school, sorry.
You don't have to apologize.
I built docks and I have two computers.
What are you saying? You're, you're saying that this is the lift you're putting in?
No, this is one that went through the storm with the boat on it, it's a 30-foot boat. This, this was up.
Yeah, but I, I don't think, yeah, okay.
I'm just trying to give you an idea of, you know, if this, for instance, if this boat was left tied up in the water, because the way the rule reads, they could leave their boat tied up in the water, but they can't have a boat lift.
I don't know why we're looking at this one, because this is a 30,000-pound lift or 28,000-pound lift.
Yeah, that was, that's from behind Robby's, it just got put in. That's another one that was there during the storm and that was permitted.
Could you tell us, do you know how long the owners owned the boat slip?
I think it was, they bought it in like February when it came up for sale.
So it was this year, so their new owner?
Yes, yes.
And it'll double in value after this approval?
I find it hard to recognize the hardship. I know that's a criteria that we do have to meet. I don't see that this is in a lot that is, you know, unconventional or, 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 or different than most lots that are in this zoning. So I, I know then the rest of the board that, you know, we do have to make a decision based on, on hardship and recognizing whether there is one or not. I find it hard to find a hardship in this.
Okay, any other comments the applicant has?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. I'm going to start off with a couple of comments. The condo that we're dealing with, this 20-unit condo, there's 17 boat slips. This will be Lift number 11, number 12, rather, there are 11 existing lifts. Bayside next door, 13 boat slips, one lift. I mean, if you go out there, and I think most of the folks on this board have boats, I know I do, and you do not leave your boat in the water any longer. I left my boat in the water for a week, I had a great crop of barnacles within a week. And it's just ridiculous to own a 30, $300,000 boat with any idea of leaving it in the water for any length of time. And this is not a residential area, so to speak, I mean, it's in the RFM district. Look at the aerial photograph, there's 30 boat slips on those two pieces of property. It's just one big boat slipped area. So the situation is, is, is it a true hardship? No, but it runs into the situation of no harm, no foul, I don't care, I want to help out our neighbors and give him a boat lift so he can not have to put that damn bottom paint on his boat and scrape for barnacles every year. So I'm going to support this 100%. Any other comments?
None here.
Ross?
No, I'm just waiting for the board to finish discussion and then I'll make a motion.
I, I agree with Richard. I'm a boat owner, I wouldn't want to leave it in the water. There is no hardship, though, I don't think there's really a hardship, but the fact that the neighbor next door is okay with it, like Richard said, let's help out our neighbors, so.
If you really want to get down to it, we'll call it a hardship. Putting, leaving your boat in the water, number one, we saw a lot of sunken boats out there here. I was out on my boat the other week, there's a jet ski over there behind Isle of Palms that's still floating upside down after over a year. You know, let's make this a safe situation during, after Helene, you wouldn't believe the amount of stuff floating down the pass behind Upland Pass, including boats. So, you know, it's a safe situation, that is the hardship in my mind. So Ross, if you would, go, go ahead, Chris.
So as much as I really would like to support it, as my colleague next to me here had a hard time seeing the hardship, I do as well. The owner obviously purchased this as a wet slip, doesn't meet the criteria and there's not really a hardship, so I don't, I, I think there could be an alternative that, since there aren't lifts on several of the other slips, that perhaps they could do a, a property exchange, a slip exchange. It may cost this property owner some money to do that, but it would stay within the rule and they would be able to put a lift in without getting a variance. So unfortunately, in my case, I can't support it just directly on that.
And at the very other end, there's a boat lift, so that's a ridiculous argument. I mean, jeez.
Well, I, I'm not saying anything about the, we're not supposed to be setting precedent based on something that was done before.
Yeah, I know we're not supposed to be, but damn, look at that aerial photograph. There's 30 slips there and there's 12, this will be the 13th lift on those two pieces of properties.
Alex, as much as I really, I do want to support it, I just don't see a way to do it.
Well, like I just said, it's a situation where it really makes no difference. Let's help our neighbors out, let's do the right thing, and let's make sure that during the next Helene, which is coming someday, let's not make sure that this guy's boat, I mean, I saw a boat right down the pass from this sunk down by the bow, and it was really bad looking. And, you know, it's one of those situations where if we're just going to be stupid and read the roll book, then let's just disband this board. And in the meantime, Ross, if you want to, go ahead and make a motion.
Hey, Jesse, in regards to our packet, you had said you wanted to make some edits. Can you just give me the edits that you would prefer for our packet to read in regards to me making a motion? It's still a 14-five, 16-foot boat lift to encroach, I think you said 12?
So underneath the history background section in the staff report.
Oh, okay, so our.
The second paragraph, it was advertised and the development order is stated correctly, it was just in the paragraph.
Gotcha, so development order is stated correctly.
Yes.
Within our packet.
Okay.
Thank you. And if the, there's no more board discussion, I'll make a motion in regards to case number VAR dash 000562 dash 2025 at the location 11525 Gulf Boulevard, number 201, Treasure Island, Florida, 33706. I'll make the motion as a planning and zoning board member, that the board has determined that an extreme hardship does exist pursuant to Section 69 dash 91 of the Treasure Island Code of Ordinance, and I will make a motion to move, with approval, a marine variance request to Section 69 dash 71A5 to permit a 14-foot by 16-foot boat lift to encroach 14 feet into the 20-foot setback.
I totally second it.
Okay, thank you, Ross, motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Marvin Shavelin, he beat you to it, Gary.
No problem.
If we could have a.
Can I just ask, just for record-keeping, there were some additional photographs that were presented to you as well as the agenda materials, those are included in the record, is that correct? Just a consensus?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
They do nothing for.
Okay, Tia, if we could have a roll call vote.
Gary Patenziano.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Mark Sowjewski.
Nay.
Chris Donning.
Nay.
Grant Smith.
Yes.
Marvin Shavelin.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, go build a boat lift after you get all those permits. Your competitor who just sold his business, Mark Speeler, said it drove him out of business getting all these permits.
It's, it's, Mike Block.
Now, he said it was, for an existing dock, it was taking him six months to get a permit, and I understand that the, his buyer bought Doug Speeler out as well. So you've got some interesting competition. Congratulations on your staying in business. Let's move on to the next case. There you go. We'll probably all need you eventually, us that have docks. Okay, number 10B, special exception dash 0008, excuse me, 580 dash 2025 dash 292nd Avenue, special exception request for a single-family residential dwelling as regulated in Chapter 68, Division 4, RFM 30. As the applicant here today, please approach the podium, give us your case.
All right. Thank you for allowing me to come in today. My name is John Horak, I'm here to represent my wife, Vicky Caraway, she's listed owner on the property. And a little background, about 292nd Avenue, we purchased it in 2017, we moved in in 2019 as our primary residence, and we used that home as our sanctuary during COVID. My wife is a cancer nurse and she operated out of there during the entire COVID scenario. I myself am a healthcare construction executive, I work for Johns Hopkins All Children as the Director of Construction. I'm a certified licensed general contractor, a certified healthcare constructor under the American Hospital Association, and a certified healthcare facility manager also under the American Hospital Association. So this is our background. It was a great little house, 768 square feet. You might recognize it from the Channel 8 news story that they put out last year, standing in front of our house, talking about the challenges people are going to have with substantial damage. During Hurricane Helene, various cabanas from the Gulf floated through and smashed through the side of the house, leaving it 33% standing. It was determined 66% substantially damaged, and so we, we had to tear it down. Knowing that it was substantially damaged, I started. Knowing that it was substantially damaged, I started reaching out to Catherine Yonkin with the city in November of last year, trying to get the rules of engagement, if you will, on what we can and can't put back on the property. And it was more in regards to the 768 square feet. There was a lot of discussion and conversation over maximum lot coverage being 50% allowable maximum lot coverage. The subject of being a commercially zoned lot versus a residential structure really didn't come to mind because it has been a residence since 1949. You know, it was thought at the time to be grandfathered in. After further review and a DRC, it was determined that there never really was a variance to put a residence on a commercial lot. Now, I don't know, it's chicken and the egg, whether the residence was there first and then the zoning was changed to be commercial, or vice versa. Nobody knows that. So this puts me in a position of cart before the horse. I undertook an effort with the local architect, Alex Rios and Associates, working within the 50% maximum lot coverage and the setbacks as were deemed in the code with 15 on the Harrell side, 10 on the 92nd Avenue, five between lots, and no setback between the rear, because it's a corner lot. And the chapter of the code is very odd in that it says Harrell Avenue between 91st Street and some other street, there are specific east and west rules. So over the past year, I've worked with the city on nailing down those rules, and this is what's shown on our current site plan. We're probably going to be discussing site plan and variance at the same time, or not variance, but special exception, because one is tied to the other. And our current, our current plans are to put back a house that's suitable for our retirement. As soon as I get this house finished, I'll be moving back. We had to leave, obviously, after the storm. My wife is a chief nursing officer for the Miami Cancer Institute. She was in Miami. I was here working at Johns Hopkins. I left my job at Johns Hopkins and moved to Miami to have a place to live. And so in one step, that's our hardship, having our place to live. In the second sense of hardship, if you look at the lot, it's got everything working against it. It's 2,108 square feet, which is smaller than most people's homes, the lot itself. The lot is sort of oblong and odd-shaped. It has a shorter distance on the left, which is the west, and a longer distance on the east. Hence, the design of the house, even the balconies, have been designed at a slope or an angle to maintain the proper setbacks. The original house that was on the property was one foot over the property line on the north and one foot over the property line on the west. So whatever the plot was drawn, houses that were in that area were not taken into consideration. My neighbor actually had a corner of my house on the property for 50 years. The house adjacent to it, Hurricane Helene picked up, flowed eastward, smashed into the next residence, and destroyed a vehicle in the process. So this area took a really bad hit, right in front of the Lions Club caddies. The Lions Club parking lot is across the street. And basically, we're asking the board to look at the code, look at the accepted uses stated in the code. RFM 30 is one of those that is an acceptable use for the property, and we ask that the board take into consideration the historical aspect of the house being there. It's keeping with the look of the neighborhood. It's keeping with the typical uses of the neighborhood. And if the board were to deny the special exception, I'd be left with a commercial lot that meets none of the criteria for commercial use. It's not large enough for parking. It's not large enough for a structure. Maybe I could put concrete pads and park food trucks on it? I don't know. I don't think caddies would like that. Maybe a pina colada hut? But we're looking to make, maybe put our home back in a reasonable time and get back here full-time again. I think I covered a lot of it. I did fill out the packet on each line of the required items where the staff asked the questions. Jesse, if you could flip to that next page on the application.
The, I'm sorry, John, what was, what did you want to say?
No, this is staff analysis, my application, where I took your same form, and I answered each of those 13 criteria to give the board an idea.
I'm sorry, I do not have enough.
Oh, that's okay.
We do have it on file, though, and they do have access to it on their iPad.
If you like, I mean, Jesse's going to.
He's going to speak to it.
Get that in his presentation, and you'll have a chance for rebuttal, so we'll hear it one way or another.
I printed a couple hundred dollars' worth of drawings. I hope everybody got them and used them. I was disappointed when I saw that iPad come out, and I was like, oh, man. All those sheets, but normally you wouldn't see a full packet like I delivered, because obviously the design wouldn't be complete until the land use was clarified.
It's the first time I've seen these iPads, too, so.
Yeah. So I would, at this point, I would just turn it over to the board and ask their consideration in improving the exception as presented and see what's.
Okay, I've got, start out with a couple of questions. I mean, I'm just clarifying a few things for the viewing audience. I live right down the street from this, your house. I've lived there for 40 years. I've seen this situation. The house that was due west view had its challenges. I was glad to see Dan McNutt buy it and turn it into a parking lot. You do realize you're going to have a lot of parking right next door to you.
It's been like that since we bought it.
Okay.
Dan has been a, has been a good neighbor. He's, he's not, he's allowed us to park when we have family over, because, you know, in this design, we, we come up with two parking spaces under the house plus the parking pad out front. So in rearranging the house, we've actually bettered our parking.
And I appreciate the fact that you're asking for no variances whatsoever. You do meet the limitation of 35-foot over base flood elevation and two feet in height. We all have our opinions on architecture. I, yours is fine. I'll just, I will just say that, because this board cannot rule on architectural design. Might not like it, don't really care.
It's a matter of preference.
It's a matter of preference, you know.
Working with a 720-square-foot footprint, which is the base floor square footage, it's really hard to get a usable home in there.
I think you've done a lot with it.
Yeah. I'm not sure 100% that I can afford the elevator on day one. It may be prepped, and then I have to earn some more money and put the elevator in after the fact, but there is provision for age and place, so that when I can't do those stairs, I have an elevator shaft designed in structurally and architecturally.
Well, they are getting cheaper. Any other questions from the board for the applicant?
Nope.
Seeing none, please have a seat. We'll have Jesse give his presentation.
All right, so I'm actually, of course, for such were exceptions, would you have site plans coming with these? So I'm going to combine these into one. Then, of course, as you know, you make a motion on each case.
I was hoping you would do that.
Yes. All right, so these are, both these cases, SPEC-000580-2025, then also case number SITE-000581-2025. So the, these are a special exception use requests to allow a single-family residential dwelling in the commercial general zoning district. And then the, of course, we have the site plan approval request for a single-family residential dwelling in the commercial general zoning district. And this is located at 292nd Avenue. The land use of commercial general is also zoned, commercial general. And as you already seen, this is a site plan. And so for the review criteria, I will go through the special exception criteria, and then for the site plan, I'm just going to pull over the actual table that we have showing that it meets the code. I won't go through the site plan, because it is a single-family, it has to come in through permitting. We have to review that all as well then, too. All right, so special exception use criteria is stated in Section 68-481. Criteria 1, a residential dwelling is a permitted special exception use within the CG zoning district. Criteria 2, the proposed special exception use is consistent with the redevelopment objective within the comprehensive plan, which is to encourage redevelopment that is compatible with the existing character in order to achieve an orderly and aesthetic mixture of land uses. Criteria 3, the residential use will adhere to all applicable land development regulations, which protect the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience. Criteria 4, the residential dwelling use will be similar to existing residential uses in the neighborhood and should not adversely affect the value of other properties. Criteria 5, the proposed use is compatible with development in the vicinity, which is primarily residential mixed with some residential, I mean, some commercial uses. Criteria 6, the residential use will be consistent with the purpose of the CG zoning district, which is to delineate those areas as defined within the city's comprehensive plan, commercial general suitable for general commercial activities and development together with the associated special exception. The residential use is a special exception within the commercial general zoning district. One thing we do want to point out, though, with the special exception, the regulations for a single-family dwelling resident is pulled from the RFM 30 zoning district. Criteria 7, this does not apply. Criteria 8, the proposed use will adhere to all applicable land development regulations. Criteria 9, the site was previously developed for residential use, and the proposed continuation of residential use will not impact the existing natural environment of the site, neighboring public parks, or neighboring properties. Criteria 10, the proposed use will adhere to all applicable land development regulations. Criteria 11, this will also adhere to all applicable land development regulations. Criteria 12, the use has sufficient land area for the construction of a single-family residential dwelling unit. Criteria 13, the developed level of service, this should not be impacted, as this was previously developed with a single-family residence. Criteria, so this is when I'm going to jump in right now to the site plan review criteria, which is stated in Section 70-92. As you can point out, it meets everything. The only thing I do want to highlight on this is it does not meet the lot area, which is required for that zoning district. Just because that, it is, of course, is a non-conforming lot and entered code. Non-conforming lots can be, are allowed to be developed with a single-family residence. And I'll just go through the staff recommendation for the special exception use. Staff has reviewed the proposed special exception use and determined that it satisfies the applicable criteria set forth in Section, was this a site plan? Oh, my apologies, I mixed these two. All right, this one is the staff recommendation for the special exception. Said forth in Section 70-92, staff has recommended approval with the following conditions. Let me read these from the staff report. I think this slideshow got messed up. All right, so, yeah, staff recommends the proposed special exception use to allow a residential dwelling in the commercial general zoning district be approved with the following conditions. A site plan, which is case number SITE-000581-2025, for a single-family dwelling unit must be approved. Did you want to go make a motion on this one, and then I'll do the staff recommendation before you do the next motion?
I was going to ask you that, if you had any comments in regard to the site plan, because we don't want to hear it all again.
No, that was it. No, I mixed them all into the same thing.
Yeah, there you go. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have any more.
I'll just read you the staff recommendation for the site plan then, too.
That's fine.
Staff recommends the proposed site plan be approved with the following conditions. Condition 1, a special exception use, case number SPEC-000580-2025, has been approved to allow a single-family dwelling in the commercial general zoning district. Criteria 2, all building permits and construction associated with this development proposal shall be subject to all current regulations within the Florida Building Code, floodplain management regulations, and land development regulations in effect at the time of the building permit application process. And staff's available for any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Jesse?
I'll have a question, but I want to make sure you don't, because I don't want to go ahead of you, Chairman.
No, go ahead. Please.
Jesse, in the parcel that's like directly west of it, the one that's, I don't care who owns it, but I guess you guys were talking about the parking. I mean, it's in the same area, same zone, whatever. They technically, I'm not saying, if we approve this, could they come in and basically ask for the same thing and build the same exact structure in that parcel? And I'm not saying that our answer, I'm not saying that our answer is based, as a board, I'm not making the decision based on that, because we don't do that. But I'm just curious, like, I mean, they build this home in this area, it's got a view, there's the potential that they could come in and ask for the same thing, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they would have to go through the same process, get the special exception use, and then the site plan.
Okay, all right. Just want to clarify that. And just to reaffirm what we've already talked about, this building does not go outside any of the setbacks, which I know Richard Harris commented about earlier.
No variance required.
No variance required, okay.
Appreciate the designer who designed it without that.
I actually was going to say it to the applicant, and it's nice to see an application that is fitting inside the footprint.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, based off of what we have here, yes. Obviously, it would go, because they still have to submit for permit. It'll go through review again, and if something is beyond the setback, it would have to be addressed then.
Yep, okay, I'm good. I don't have any further questions.
Anybody else? Seeing none, Mr. Horak, have you got any further comments?
I just wanted to comment on.
At the mic, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approach the podium and.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the way the setbacks are stated, because it's not an issue, but the Duke platform extends into the rear, which is north three feet, whatever the Duke platform is. So in my, what I was told via email was that there's no setback on the rear of the property because of Harrell Avenue and 92nd.
There actually still is a setback. It's a five-foot setback based off the layout. I apologize if you were given incorrect information.
I was going to say, we do, there are setbacks on Harrell Avenue.
Yes, so this, you don't have a rear yard, because it's a corner lot, so you have a street setback, street setback. Then this is a side yard setback of five feet, and then this is also a side yard setback is five.
That's a side yard setback and not rear yard?
Yes. So if that is encroaching, that is something we can address during the permit.
Yeah, that is. The only thing encroaching is the Duke platform into that setback.
Okay, so we can just have you just redesign that before you submit for.
We need to move it?
Yes.
I thought you just were talking about exceptions for the Duke platform.
I believe, I'm not really sure. I guess I could ask City Attorney of that, if they would allow, the board is able to add conditions to.
They can add conditions to it, yes, to the site plan, that it be relocated to not conflict.
Okay, they.
Because that's, that in itself is a hardship, because you're cutting into my 728 square feet available.
Or we could also allow it. Is that correct?
Well, if you're talking about a hardship and you're asking for a variance, I mean, that is another land use approval that would have to, you don't really want to delay him.
We cannot get in the business of new construction homes allowing Duke platforms to be built outside the setback through a variance. I'm sorry, we cannot be doing that.
That was a general procedure and that we use, say, in new construction, you know, we're not going to grant variances for Duke power platforms. We just were not. For you, for raised homes.
I see.
That's, that's a different scenario altogether.
That's what I misunderstood.
And the situation is, you do have some corners up on the northwest side where you could potentially get it in there.
I will tell you, sir, that, that there are options. I'm going through the same process right now of building a new, designing a new home. I am bringing in filler. I don't need, again, my elevation on my property may be different than yours, but because I'm building my house up, I don't have to put stairs on the side of my house to get to a Duke meter. They can build it, because the ground is lifted, the Duke meter can come down lower because it's still.
With a breach.
Correct. So I'm not saying that that, there is something that you should explore there. Again, my situation's not approved or anything like that, but.
Yeah, we don't plan to bring any fill. We plan to.
I understand.
Maintain.
But, you know, I'm not trying to take the, hate to use the cliche, like wind out of your sails, but if that came back before us, it's, it's not, it's not going to get approved.
This is throwing a wrench into the situation. I mean, I really don't see that northwest corner having adjacency to the building. It is right on the five-foot setback.
Five on the.
On.
Are you at maximum height?
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Is the only purpose for the stairway, the Duke meter, is that the only reason that you have the stairway and the setback?
Yes, and it's, it's, was put there because the power pole is on the northeast corner, it's the closest adjacent power supply.
I'm sorry, Grant, can I cut in real quick?
Sure.
I misspoke on that one. Actually, the applicant was correct. I misread the setbacks. There is no side setback for that one.
Perfect, so he is, he's good.
Okay.
My apologies. You can pull the heart out of your stomach now, sir.
For real.
Sorry about that.
And your $800 packet of plans, so you don't have to throw those away.
So...
So you're good there?
No variances.
Come on, Jesse!
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Take this guy to Waffle House, to a nice dinner in Treasure Island.
No, I'm a human being, I don't know everything.
Wow, dodged a bullet.
Note for the comments, could we get a motion on both of these items? Well, we will need two different motions, but whoever wants to make it, make one and then make the second.
If there's no other board discussion, I'll look for a nod, I'll make a motion, if that's okay with everyone.
Yes, sure.
In regards to case number SPEC-000580-2025, at location 292nd Avenue, Treasure Island, Florida, as a planning and zoning board member, I will make the motion to approve a special exception use request to allow residential dwelling in the commercial general zoning district with the conditions listed in my packet. Being that there's only one, I will list it, a, I'll read it, a site plan, site-000581-2025, for a single-family residential dwelling must be approved, unit must be approved.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Chris Downing. Roll call, please.
Gary Patenziano.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Mark Zajewski.
Yes.
Chris Downing.
Yes.
Grant Smith.
Yes.
Marvin Chavlin.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, second motion, Ross.
If there's no discussion amongst the board, we've already heard it. Thank you, Jesse, for doubling up those, the client packet for us. I will make a motion, just let me look, okay. In regards to case number SITE-000581-2025, at location 292nd Avenue, Treasure Island, Florida, 33706, as a planning and zoning board member, I am making a motion to approve a site plan approval for a single-family residential dwelling in the commercial general zoning district with the conditions one and two listed in our packet.
Okay, a motion by Ross Sanchez, second by Marvin Chavlin, going to have a roll call vote.
Gary Patenziano.
Yes.
Ross Sanchez.
Yes.
Mark Zajewski.
Yes.
Chris Downing.
Yes.
Grant Smith.
Yes.
Marvin Chavlin.
Yes.
Richard Harris.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for taking on this section of the neighborhood. You've obviously had some challenges. Like I said, I've lived down the street for the last 40 years, and that, you know what's going on in your neighborhood, it has its challenges.
Does anybody know if the Lions Club is going to rebuild?
Yes, I do. And hopefully, with this board, we'll be seeing that soon. And it's public information, they don't mind me sharing, they're going to sell off one lot, that will give them the funds to build their new clubhouse, they will have an elevated clubhouse, it potentially will block your view of the Gulf. But like Ross was saying, there's a potential that house just to the west of you would build there, too. You know what's, you know what's there.
I think you got your balconies in the right way. Go build your house after you get a permit.
But the Lions Club, hopefully, will be submitting to the city soon, according to what they have said. And that's another issue, after your case is done, that, now that I'm reminded, that I won't talk about.
Don't worry, there's nothing to view north of your property anyway, so you'll be okay.
All right, thank you. Public comment for non-agenda items, anybody in the audience today? And there's nobody in the audience at all. Reports and comments of city attorney, staff, and board members.
No comments.
Okay.
I got a couple.
Hold on, let's, let's get the staff first. Jesse, you got anything you want to talk about? I know we've got cases coming.
We do, yeah, I don't know, I already kind of went over some of those already. I guess, I might as well announce it now. But next month, could be my last month presenting here at the Planning and Zoning Board, we do have a new principal planner that is starting on Monday, so we're going to slowly bleed him to take over the planning and zoning board stuff for us. And I'll be focused strictly on just floodplain.
What is that person's name?
Braden Evans.
You're going to focus then on, I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that.
I will be focused on being the floodplain manager then.
Okay, great.
All right, getting into the board members.
Joan, nothing from Joan? Nothing? Not one thing? Okay.
Go ahead, Ross, we'll let you start.
Yeah, I'll take a couple of minutes while we're here together as a board. I mean, I gotta say that I'm very discouraged in regards to what's been going on within our city from a growth and development standpoint, with a lot of the stuff that this board has put forward, whether you're forward or not, it's going out there, and it just seems like it's not going anywhere. You know, a typical frustration is, you know, a lot of that Thunderbird application stuff was talking about the Thunderbird. That application was for the entire zoning district, so in the future, when things like that take place, I'd like for it to be labeled differently from the, just the Thunderbird perspective, because there were comments about developers' pockets getting lined and things of that nature, which is just truly sad. The, some of the other things, I think that there was some, not, what's the word I'm looking for? It's the, the thing that you send out to, to residents and their petitions, sorry. So, there's petitions that were going out and around, and they're flooding on the internet. The amount of misinformation that was on that from an education standpoint was truly disturbing. There was so many things out there that people were reading and people were putting, I get signs in their yards, but when you actually know the education of what this city needs to move forward, it truly, it truly kind of really, really frustrated me, because there's a lot of time and energy that goes into the, from this, this board application. I think that it's going to be a while. I understand that there was a lot of talk about master plans, master plans, I get the buzzword of master plans. We have them in place today, and they are over the past decade or so, and it's got us nowhere, so now as a taxpayer, we're going to be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars for another master plan, where my taxes are going up on my dirt lot, and I have nothing to show for it, when it comes from a, from a city perspective. So I'm paying taxes on a dirt lot, and over the, there's going to be a delay from a perspective of, now we have to go out to RFP, now we have to have someone come and do another master plan, which we already have. Again, from an education standpoint, like, we had that joint meeting, which was great for all of us to have a joint meeting together, and we had right there the ability to kind of move things forward, and we're now stalled, and we're going to go back. And one of the things that I know that Kim Lee Horn's looking into, and Joan, I'd like to challenge you, not for the next meeting in December, but maybe in January, or probably February, is to talk to these major commercial owners. Does anyone know if a transaction, transaction has taken place on the Treasure Island club? You know, has that ownership changed? Are we talking to those people? I know Kim Lee Horn's coming out and supposedly going to give us feedback on what the city needs, but going back to that education perspective, like, one of the things that we could have talked about, if something is built in downtown, I'm not talking about Pirate Square specifically, I'm talking about anywhere in downtown, that it could be built right on the road. Everyone has said that they do not want a cave look approach when they come into Treasure Island. Do people know that if something were, okay, if the, if the owners on either side of the clock tower said, oh, I want to build something, it's going to be built up as a canyon? I don't think people know that. So as we're sitting here saying, no, we don't want height, say again, Jesse?
I was going to say, that, that's just a setback, like, they don't have to build it right up against there. You know, if they want to build, like, a setback, for example, like, you have to build 20 feet back, then you don't have to build zero feet back if you don't, you can...
They could build it, they could build it at zero feet setback, though, correct?
They could, yes.
Correct. Well, again, if people are talking about maximizing dollars and things of that nature, they would end up doing that. I'm not saying that they will, I'm just talking about...
You're correct that in the circumstance, we could get what we don't really want.
Correct, correct, so now we're, now we're...
Which goes to many of the arguments made.
So we are now going to delay, okay, which is fine, I, I'm not really happy about it, but if this is what's going to do. But I also just, as we're going through this process, if we're going to hire, if we're going to do this master plan, and I apologize, I couldn't be at the meeting on Tuesday, but if we're going to hire and we're going to pay this money, we need to have some type of performance guarantees in regards to that plan coming back, because there's a lot of money that this city is going to dump. By the way, we have to pay for a new pump station, we have to pay for a new police and fire, we have to pay for, we have to pay for probably Treasure Bay, if what we're going to do there, there's other things in this city, we have to pay for staff, we have to pay for inflation, things of that nature. That is all going to cost more money. With all of these dirt lots of these residential homes that are now being scraped, and 20% of them are only being put back, there's going to be a decrement to our income from property tax money coming in. So if we're spending a lot of money, and we don't have as much money coming in, where are they going to come from? Where, where is the city going to get the money from? Is it going to get from our already the highest millage rate in the county, or from the, from the barrier islands? Because we can't keep increasing our taxes, it's going to be on our backs, I think that's what's going to end up happening in regards to how this city is going to make money if we leave it the way that it's going to leave as we go through this process. So I appreciate you all listening to me, I'm a little fired up about it, because truly a lot of time and effort's been put in trying to get this city to the next station. I know that the property owners are saying the same thing to you, Joan, or at least I hope they are, but we got to start getting some feedback in regards to what's needed, because we can't live like this.
Yeah, I'll follow it up.
Thank you, all right, all right. I'm sorry I just had to say it, because, you know, one of the things, just real quick, because I actually made some really good notes on it, and I want to, I want to focus on it. When the potential Jim Brainer was here, there was three comments, I have the minutes marked, about how he talked about heightened density, and how good heightened density could be required. You know, some of the things he was talking about were the cars underground, you know, we can go, I'll go through this later, because I have it in my notes, but there is a discussion that needs to happen around that, and I know that we're trying, but it just seems like we're getting absolutely nowhere. I understand that that's the, the public, but I actually have a lot of people that come to me and say they're for it, but they're too afraid to come up to a podium or email to the city because of what repercussions could come from the opposition. So, thank you.
We, I think we all share your passion. May not agree with everything, but I think we all, a lot of us agree with that passion.
Okay, we're going to go down the line here. Mark, you got any comments? Gary, I'm going out of step.
That's all right, I'm good.
Anyway, Chris?
I have comments on other subjects, that just, if I could reserve my time.
Okay, Grant?
Just in response, Russ, I think that the misinformation that you refer to is an issue, and I think it's an issue on both sides. My stance on this from the very beginning has been, there is a documented, validated, verified series of steps that you go through when you engage in a rigorous due diligence process. It doesn't begin with the developer requesting greater heightened density, and that's the extent of the evidence, which is what we're working from. There are documented steps that you go through, public benefit, impact studies, alternative analysis, sensitivity analysis, performa analysis. When you're talking about an ordinance that impacts the entire Gulf side, the scope and the scale of which is significant, to simply move ahead based upon the request of a developer without any performa analysis that essentially says why they need this and what our benefits are going to be, to me is irresponsible, and it's just wrong-headed. So I'm all for development, I'm all for smart development. But this should be an evidence-driven process in which we consider multiple views, we consider multiple angles and multiple alternatives to this. If we are considering merely the request of a developer and their, you know, I think that their self-interest and their profit motive is what's going to drive it, and as it should, that's what they're in the business for. My point is, we just need more information. And to be honest with you, in terms of stalling the development, had the Thunderbird agreed to rebuild under the current codes, they'd be 60 days into this process now. They reached high, and they, they, it didn't work. So I agree, I want development, I want to see us rebuild, but I don't want to do it so haphazardly that there's always time to do it right. There's never time to do it right, but there's always time to do it over. I want to make sure we do it right.
Mr. Marvin, you got any comments today? I got a bunch. Anyway, we'll stay on this same subject. Bottom line is, real easy. If six stories, five-over parking worked, it had already been built on. It doesn't work, plain and simple. I've been in the land development business for 40 years, don't you dare try to tell me what works and what doesn't work. I designed and I built six hotels. Five-over parking on that site obviously didn't work. So, now, what are we going to have for the next five years minimum? Nothing, nothing. They're not going to do anything. I guarantee you, they are not going to come in and say, oh gee, we were wrong, now we're going to have five-over parking, and we're going to build a project that loses money. That's a high-risk, high-reward business. You know, I talked to the owner of our downtown area, his comment is, said he just took a great step backwards, I'm not going to do anything. You know, situation is, people don't remember what happened at the Fargo and the Buccaneer. They asked for a variance for seven-over one, they didn't get it, sat vacant for 10 years. Plan on the Thunderbird, sitting vacant for 10 years. And that's just the way it'll be, fine, it's not going to affect me at all, other than the fact that I'm going to end up paying more taxes, like Ross said. You know, situation is. But anyway, down on Sunset Beach, I counted the number of vacant lots, 67. That's how many houses have come down. It's pretty amazing. The answer to all this is something that I've been pushing for 10 years, plan development ordinance. It's a zoning category that doesn't even exist in this city, has never existed. Did we ask Kim Lee Horn to work on it? Yeah. We might get it in two years. That means nothing's going to happen on this city for 10, for at least two years. The only big enough property to do a true plan development project is the Krabbies on the Pash property. It's nine acres. And it's going to be big enough. The other ones, I was really, truly hoping that the Thunderbird would jump, you know, I've heard all kinds of rumors, oh, they're just going to get their approval and sell it. Yeah, I know that. They could, they could have done that. But now nobody wants to buy it. Situation is, I don't think it'll happen, but I was hoping that that project would jumpstart something into this city. Can't you see all this big construction out here? No, you see nothing. But anyway, I got a couple of other things. Bobby Shay, why don't you go ahead with yours, but I do have a question for Jackie before you leave. Couple of questions, but go ahead.
So, I apologize. As you guys share your concerns and you're talking, I realize that I know a lot more than I realize I know, and I'm working on a lot more than I probably have shared, so I'm going to go down the list. We're going to start with the LDR updates. You guys did a fantastic job, we had our joint meeting, we're moving forward into phase two. We've already started to begin to schedule our stakeholder meetings as part of that, and we're looking at our community outreach, outreach programs as well. TI Club, I don't want to say too much, because I certainly don't want to jinx or cause concern in the community and unrest where there doesn't need to be any, I will just say that we had a fantastic meeting with Ford Pinellas. We see a path for the first time in a very long time, and anticipate that with our new council, we'll be able to find a pathway forward for them to open up for business. The Ford Pinellas piece was huge, unexpected, and, and we don't want to celebrate too soon, but we are hopeful with that property. With Greenleaf, same thing, we're having conversations, I've been speaking with their attorney, waiting for our new council to come on board, and Jesse as well, and there are, there are some options there that could help their development site plan, and again, it's hopeful, and they are hopeful. Pirate Square, we stood before here when we did the, asked for the amendment, and our recommendation was that they meet with Ford Pinellas and have the necessary meetings, those meetings are on the calendar. So while, Chair, I know you're, you're concerned that they're not going to move forward, they not going to move forward, they have shown the appetite and the initiative to do the necessary steps. To your point, Mr. Downing, when you talk about, or I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you talk about the impact studies, we have a grant out through the county to handle and cover the cost of our impact study. Impact fees. So we came before you, Ford Pinellas came before you about the impact fees and our local agreement. That is now at the next phase, and we will be hosting the meeting for Ford Pinellas with this region where they're going to talk to the staff of multiple municipalities about the steps moving forward, the county's intent, their appetite, what those fees look like, and we'll be sharing that information with our commission as we move forward. Because as we know, that was a state mandated obligation to have an interlocal agreement with impact fees across the county.
And so those would be impact fees beyond multimodal?
The multimodal impact fees.
These would be broad-based?
Nope, nope, just multimodal impact fees.
Oh, just multimodal.
It's the next phase of the multimodal impact fee. Yeah, we'll have a timeline when the county tends to implement the fees on their end, what that means to us, and the steps that we need to take moving forward. Yesterday, the TDC made a fun announcement. They're amending their language to include beachfront parks as a separate category for grant opportunities. I don't know that Treasure Bay necessarily qualifies as a beachfront park because it hasn't been defined, but certainly we have the Sunset Beach Pavilion and we have other areas in the city that would qualify. So that's, that's a pretty cool opportunity because that's a whole new pot of, or a whole new designated pot of money in that past yesterday.
Please send a note to City of St. Pete for...
There are, so Gary Volnek, our Public Works Director, is actually in conversations with the City of St. Pete.
I didn't mean to cut you off. I just...
No, no, you're fine. It's on our radar and it's something that we're following up on. Yes.
Can you provide any update on what the City of St. Pete is planning to do with that property?
It's my understanding that they plan to demolish the concession stands and just add restrooms.
Oh.
Clean up the property.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah. I mean, they, because they...
But again, this amendment through TDC was just, was just determined yesterday. So maybe this is a tool that they can use to help beautify their, their space. I can't speak for them, but it certainly seems as though that's clearly a beachfront park access.
We got to figure out ways to get people to invest in Treasure Island. It's very difficult for someone to say, I want to put money into even the City of St. Petersburg. They're going to look around and go, why are we going to put money into this concession stand? We can make more on parking and put in showers and be done with it.
And I understand the frustration. I've only been here since May 27th and the progress and the movement that I've seen with my team and what we're trying to do. I mean, given the circumstances, I can tell you that we're putting everything that we have into it.
I appreciate that.
We are not accepting no as an answer. We're looking at hurdles as opportunities to find a way and, yeah.
Imagine being here since 1989.
Oh, my, my family settled here in 1927. They were one of the first hoteliers.
It looks the same.
So maybe a little out of the box, but in the case of this St. Pete property or that, the parking area, I don't know how, what the history of that is in terms of how it was deeded and all of that.
It was a legacy deed that was given to St. Pete, and the terms the deeds say that if they forego the property, they cannot transfer to another municipality. It goes back to the family of the legacy.
I see. So that nicks what I was going to at least recommend to see if there was any chance of us, you know, making a deal with St. Pete to take it over.
I would say taking it over legally is going to be...
Or with the family, I guess. Why couldn't we go to the family?
It would be a challenge, but right now, we maintain the trash pickup on that property and maybe there's more of a mutual agreement that we can expand upon. I believe that...
I know we do the enforcement as well.
And that's something that Gary Volnek is, is, has on his plate in that conversation with the City of St. Pete.
But maybe that, Grant, what you said, in terms of looking at the family, maybe there is something there.
I appreciate all that information. Thank you.
I apologize.
No, you don't have to apologize.
Sometimes I get wrapped up in my day and I forget that I know what I know, so...
Mr. Grant, like, I want to, because I know Mr. Grant made, made feedback and I'm on board. I just want to make sure that as you're talking to these people, because it goes in line with what Grant's saying, we, we got to be friendly. Like, I understand that we want to do these studies and impact studies, and I understand that we cannot be turning these people away because right now it looks very bad on nothing's ever going to happen here. I mean, again, not calling out the Thunderbird, but they went through the process, they put it all together, then they got shut down, which, okay, that's fine, but they're, hopefully they're still at the table. All these business properties are still at the table because we cannot keep going the way that we're going.
Well, an answer to that, Ross, I get a lot of phone calls. I was up in North Carolina, so I didn't make the meeting. As I'm driving back down here, I get phone calls from one of the largest landowners on this island. Several, you know, more than one call said it was unbelievable what happened Tuesday night. We have a city commission that votes three to two to approve the comprehensive land use plan. Then they removed the RFM 30. Okay, they approve it four to one. Oh, okay, well, might something happen in this city. Oh, nope. Everybody changes. PD comes into the mix. Denied, four to one. Great victory for the people who want to keep things in the status quo. The comment I got from all these landowners, enjoy your status quo. You have a rundown city. It will stay that way.
And that's it. I mean, these people said, we're not moving forward, not until the atmosphere in that town changes.
That's a, just, I know you're working hard. I know you are.
And one last, one last thing, we just had, I had a conversation with Marcus yesterday, and I believe Jackie can confirm, we have a DRC set up for caddies in their, their next steps. So another business back online.
And you mentioned Greenleaf. Is that the Gators property?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
They prefer not to be referred to as the Gators property moving forward, so we're, we can call it the Pass.
Tell them to come in here and give us some type of plan that Grant and everyone else can sign off on that makes sense and they can have the conversation.
I can appreciate that.
And we'll call them whatever they want us to call them.
Sure, sure. And I'm going to, I'm going to leave you...
Because, Grant, I want to make it clear, like, I think there's a big difference from these applicants. I understand you're not just saying, oh, let's just give them everything. I think where I want you and I to come together from a positioning standpoint is, I think that they need to tell the city what they're looking for and the city tells them what they're looking for. That's what I'm trying to get to where, you know, the city has the stats of what makes sense for them, and then you can figure that out because we don't have that tool in the toolkit, as you guys have said before, and that is something that is readily available for us to where we can get things moving forward. And in the smart way, because when people, like I know Commissioner Clark sat up here at one point and said twice, I'm, he's, this is a comment from him, I am 1 million percent behind development, but smart development. You had made the comment as well, I am for development. Smart development. Okay, that's fine. This is smart development. If people are wanting to invest in Treasure Island, we should be having those conversations with them. It's smart for us to have those conversations, to tell them what we want and what they want, and then you kind of figure out what works moving forward. That, to me, is smart development and 1 million percent, that's a pretty good odd to have when it comes to which favor, positive or negative that you're, that you're going.
And then he turned and voted against it. I mean, Corey Landing in St. Pete Beach is a prime example. You know, that was pretty much, whether it was officially one or not, a planned development. The city got a park. They got a lot of boat slips. They got parking. You know, I mean, these people were willing to give a little to get a little. Like I said, it's a high-risk, high-reward business.
John's Pass in Madera Beach is getting a Marriott or an autograph.
Well, they've been talking about it.
In the past.
Yeah. But anyway, situation is, we need to move forward, and we took a great step backwards Tuesday night. So in the, in the spirit of going forward...
Yes.
I understand that at the last, at the Tuesday meeting, they did prove to move the location of the, or at least the planning for it, for the fire and police over onto 100 and...
Back to 108th.
108th. But now that leaves a fairly large swath of city-owned land, and this would, I'm sure this is going to be something that Joan's going to be working with as well to look at what are the options for the city to do public-private partnership on that land to help with the development of the downtown area. But, so maybe we'll get at least some thoughts on that. I know we're early in the process.
So just, I'll leave you with two things. One, just to help us spread the message and the word, I have set up a pop-up resource center on December 2nd at the Community Center. We've invited the county in to be there for the People's First Program in an event so that people don't come and find their decline and feel defeated. I've added, Suncoast Credit Union has reached out. They have low-rate loans for rehab, rehabilitation, rebuild programs. Also, Volunteers of America has a new project, Cope, which is a variety of resources, all the way from mental health, PTSD, to getting back in your home and necessary resources for that. So that's December 2nd, all day. And then to address an issue that was brought to the commission in public comment, they have posted the position for Director of Community Development, but that does not mean I'm leaving. I am, I'm still on staff. I am still working the projects that are dear to me, and I'm still available if you have any questions.
Can you repeat that county event, the December 2nd?
December 2nd at the Community Center from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay. And there's folks from the county that are coming, like county leaders?
Yes. The county, no, 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 the County People's First Program. So the, the staff that is executing and evaluating applications for that program, and it's designed, it's part of the CBD GR money, that's designed to get people back in their homes. I believe there are 95 applications from Treasure Island. A small percentage of those actually qualify. But again, it's first come, first served, and it'll be information, and anybody from the surrounding areas can come to Treasure Island. It's, you know, a regional pop-up, if you will. If any of you know of any programs that fit in that model that would be helpful to our community, we don't have a closed door. I'm welcoming, this, this isn't picking and choosing, I'm welcoming anybody that has something to offer.
I just thought if county leaders were here, I wouldn't, wanted you to give them a tour of our police and fire setup, so, if they're not here.
So I'm not sure if you know, but I come from the county. I actually worked for Chair Brian Scott for his first two terms, helped get him to office, and he's very aware of the need.
Okay.
When the CBD GR monies, once they exhaust and they have met the first requirement, just getting people back in their homes, there's discretionary funds, a percentage of that, that can be used for things like our fire station. And so that's another issue that I'll be working, but I don't anticipate that even being put on the table in probably late spring after session.
Understood.
Yeah. They're going to issue that money out to individuals first.
You shouldn't be dependent on it anyway, but I'm just, I appreciate you guys...
The total comes to about $180 million of discretionary money. The total, 400 and some million dollars. And reminding you, that's coming through the federal government and being filtered through our counties, so...
Oh, so that is something.
It's significant.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Joan, please.
And I'll just pick up where Bobby Shay left off. So with that CBD GR funding also in the spring, we'll see the county open up its small business fund and opportunities. So for some of our small businesses that have been impacted, they'll have a chance to reach some funding. I won't take too much time. I know, Ross, you tried to give me a softball there as to what else we've been working on. You know, how I see things, Tuesday was a disappointment for sure. However, there's been a lot of great discussion in these different meetings. Again, with the joint session that you did with the city commission, we're now talking about planned development zoning, right? So, so a great opportunity to see if we can get that put into our toolbox. Obviously, the private amendment that the Thunderbird brought to us, that put another new tool on the table for us to consider, which was the development agreement. Additionally, as Bobby Shay and, and the team is doing the LDRs Phase Two with Kim Lee Horn is moving down the track, and I just wanted to come back to the master plan thought. Ross, just, you know, for your education, I think the master plan that was being discussed was more citywide. We've done master plans for water and downtown and parks, but we've never looked at the city as a whole from a master plan. So potentially, that could be something new that fills the gap between our comp plan and what we're doing with strategic plans and our capital improvement program. So on the topic of the master plan, I'm working with our CFO and our Public Works Director. We're preparing an agenda item for the December 2nd workshop meeting to bring that forward to the commission so they can have a discussion. We, the city manager was tasked with, as it relates to the master plan project, to go out for quotes, to obtain a master plan advisory services. Staff had completed that quote, so we'll talk about that in the December 2nd workshop meeting. Then, just this week, on Tuesday, the city manager got another directive regarding the master plan, citywide master plan, to look at an RSQ, RFP. So that will also be discussed in both the workshop meeting, and we're preparing an action item for the regular meeting that follows the workshop meeting on master plan. In the, in the work that we finished for the quote, for a Phase One master plan advisory service component to it, it had two key parts to it to get us started. One was visioning, you know, so working with our community to really look at the vision that we currently have. So like in the downtown setting, we've got a mixed-use vision for the downtown, which right now, we just define on 107th, which is kind of interesting, and along this part of Gulf Boulevard. So I wonder if we ought to think a little bit more broader on what our central city downtown district should look like. That could potentially be, if the master plan, a citywide master plan were to go forward, that could be the type of conversation that we have together as a, as a community. Additionally, we put in Phase One of, for the master plan, the tools. So I know, Mr. Smith, you had shared information with our, our city commission, and you just articulated some of the analysis that would need to partake if we were to put some of these new tools in our toolbox. That would also be included. So we would, again, get ourselves ready for the investment that ultimately will come to this island. Do we have to work for it? Y'all are absolutely right. It's a, it's a highly competitive for mixed-use development, the quality development that we want, that gives us living and working and entertainment, et cetera, in the center, in the heart of our island. Yeah, we're going to have to work really hard at it. But I would, I would say, being the newcomer to the island, we're, we, while we take a little step backwards and sometimes sideways, you know, the fact that we're talking about all of these key aspects to setting ourselves up for future success and allowing our commercial property owners, they're not developers, they're us. They own, own this island like we do as residents, you know, to allow them to unleash what, you know, their, their hopes and dreams are for, for the island too. So just a quick update on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you worked on any planned developments before in your life?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've worked on about 25. I was on the side of the developer. I came in with a proposal. This is what I proposed. This works. And I proposed it to the various municipalities and said, this is what we need to, to build in order to make this worthwhile. Otherwise, we'll walk away. A lot of people right now are saying, okay, well, just going to walk away. But we do need a planned development, but it needs to put the ball in the court of the developer. Let them come up with something that we, they know will work. They own the property. The citizens of this island do not own this property, but we want to have input, but they start the ball rolling. The city comes back and the, and the residents and say, well, we'd like to make a few changes. Do you see, foresee that at all happening?
Oh, absolutely. Again, one of my communities I had the privilege of working in, as we got ourselves ready for planned development, use of development agreements, we actually worked with our community. I think we had a list of 22 community benefits, because I don't think anyone who wants to make an investment like this wants to guess or to get it wrong. You know, so the fact that from a, from a city perspective, we had this list that was kind of blessed by the community because it came from the community, you know, we'd love, you know, the, the funding for the new fire truck, or we'd like the, you know, extra green space, or, or do the green building, or whatever was important to us. But it ended up being 22 things long, and it was useful. And in the community that I'm referencing, it was Delray Beach. We actually got a headquarters out of it. We've got, we got some creativeness out of it. So that inju, how do you say that word? Besides for creativity, ingenuity?
Ingenuity.
You got it.
Yeah, ingenuity. You know, man, you know, that's the, this is what I see around me, the ingenuity of this community for us to do these creative things moving forward. If we can just get some of these tools and plan development zoning and this and that, you know, in place, I, I think we definitely better position ourselves for, for current status quo. And there's, there's certainly a cost of it in action.
I agree with that. The situation is, on huge projects, you can ask for stuff like, oh yeah, I want the developer to build a new fire department, fire station. Yeah, no problem. You know, costs of doing business.
So I haven't been on the developer's side like you have, Mr. Chairman. I've only been on the professional staff's side that, you know, helped put that in place.
But you know, the situation was, our downtown redevelopment plan, the city staff, back in 2006 to 2009, hired each... hired HDL to build, to come up with this plan. And they said, we want you to build this. Every developer I knew looked at that redevelopment plan and said, this is garbage. It does not work. I try, I can give you examples of that type of development that failed miserably. And there's one on 22nd Avenue North in St. Petersburg, failed miserably. So the situation is, is we need to come up with a situation where the developer throws the first pitch. And that's what I'm looking for is, yeah, let's see what you want to do and go from there. But when the city puts, that are not retailers, that are not developers, they don't know what they're doing when it comes to retail. That retail, being successful retailer or restaurateur or hoteler is one of the hardest jobs in the world. And when the city staff is dictating what you will do, what happens is, what happened? Nothing. And once again.
I support your, you know, you know, desire to have PDs in this community and allow us to have that, that planning, that, you know, that planning tool. I think we'd get the support of the residents for that as well. If we put some good guardrails around it. I'm sure in the case of Delray Beach, there were ceilings and guardrails around how, what you could do within that PD. And I think that's what our, our citizenry is probably asking for around that.
So Joan, if we go through these studies, like, because I know you had just said that people will be all for it if we, if we create this master plan, which, okay. If, if we create or if we get these studies, we do the master plan, we pay taxpayer money to go get this plan, it comes back and it says, yeah, you guys need more heightened density. And then we're back at square one where they're gonna be asking for more heightened density. And it's proven is the, is the residents gonna just be like, okay, I guess we did, did the research and we're okay with it now. Like, I just don't see that happening.
I see that happening. I actually think that can happen. I think it's reasonable people in the community.
Yeah, to your point, Ross, that would be an independent analysis that is not, you know, biased by individuals' self-interest.
15 stories in the air, 20 stories in the air.
You know, I'm an evidence-based analyst.
Okay.
And if the evidence is rigorous and it's defensible and it's been compiled, if it's not based merely on somebody's opinion or somebody's experience and there is quantifiable evidence that shows the return on investment, given the residual land value investment and all these things, this becomes a math problem.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm a little bit more jaded with like what, what has happened. So I mean, we'll.
And that's because the information has been really thin about this.
So why can't we have Greenleaf come and give us a presentation? They must have a concept of what they're thinking about and let's, you know, let's hear what they have to say. Maybe they'll come up with this concept.
But it goes back to the same scenario as the Thunderbird. They came in, they wanted us, they, they had this concept. This is what they wanted to do.
Guys might be more sophisticated. I don't know that for sure, but let's give it a shot.
And that's, I think, I think that's where the PDs, I think that's where.
In the meantime, let these guys come in.
And they could help inform the direction even of some of what the master planning that was going.
We may love what they come up with. I understand they were talking about a Margaritaville concept. I mean, we not gonna like that? I mean, come on.
I was gonna say, Greenleaf is pretty easy, you know, the, the zoning for Greenleaf on the east side of Gulf Boulevard is general commercial. So we could get a real good Marina storage. We could get about 200,000 square feet of retail, maybe a BJ's, you know. So, so for Greenleaf, and Bobby Shay, correct me if that's not what you.
Within the current rules we have?
It's, it's definitely zoning, you know, category right now of, of their property. Generally is where, you know, you'd start. And they wanna, I've, I've heard Greenleaf say to me, you know, they wanna give a beautiful mixed use.
Great.
But right now, general commercial and mixed use doesn't align.
Let's see if we can work something out. I mean, this planning stuff is like.
We approved a parking lot for them and they haven't done it yet.
Well, parking.
Because they don't want to do the parking lot, Ross. I mean, I've talked to these guys. They would love to do something, but they're not gonna risk a lot of money.
Have something very enlightening to say.
I, I'm not gonna speak for Greenleaf. I can only speak to.
Thank you, Joan.
I can only speak to the conversations that we've had. And there, there's an issue that interferes with what that site plan looks like now versus what it could potentially be. I'm excited that Nancy and Ralph and Vos are on board because I feel like they are the key to unlock this property. The conversations will happen as soon as everybody is available to sit at the table. We've already had the preemptive discussions and he is as enthusiastic about moving forward as this board is to see him move forward. And I have to commend his patience and his investment in this community for as long as he has. And I just feel like we are so close and I know that the temperature is hot and I know that the politics is hotter. But I also know what this community is capable of. If we can just take a breath and keep our eye on the ball and remember that regardless of where we stand and what we support and what we love best, better than the other, we are all looking at the same goal, which is having a vibrant, economically affluent, successful, well-visited community. And if we can just spend a little more time focusing on that and how we get there and the way that we make compromise to get there versus winning is the only way we're gonna get this done. And that's just the opinion of somebody who's been in government affairs for 20-plus years. So that is my plea, my personal plea, as a resident of Treasure Island, by the way, so I can say that now. What's that?
It's not a straight line.
Please receive.
It is not a straight line, but we are all adults and I have a, I have confidence that with all the brilliant minds in the room and all the recommendations and suggestions that we have to offer and the enthusiasm of our chair, I am not giving up just yet, Mr. Harris.
No, I'm all for it. I tell you, it's just, it's just frustrating because, you know, you see all these signs around. We're for sensible development. What do you know? You start Googling sensible development and what is sensible development? Taller buildings and higher density because they want to prevent urban sprawl. My whole career, I was doing, designing subdivisions. We don't want subdivisions. We want high-rise buildings. We want everybody, I mean, what's happening in the Dome District right now is amazing. I mean, if you like that type of housing. I personally don't. But, you know, we just need to keep moving forward. I guess that's the thing. And we just are not moving forward. I do, I hate to change the subject, but I know Jackie is in the back here.
I'm not working with you just yet. I'm gonna be taking notes because I think you guys want us to create an ordinance, right?
Richard, just a reminder, I've got about three very quick items when we're ready. Yeah. You go first.
I know you want to talk about Duke Power Platforms on new construction, but anyway, I wanted to ask Jackie. Unfortunately, we are losing Jackie to my former hometown of Safety Harbor. And we hate to see you go, but.
Even Saturday than Tuesday.
So since you're going and it's some things you can do something about, some things you can't do it. Since I've known you, I've talked to you about 11685th. Is there any updates? Is she gonna, we all know what the answer is. The answer is she needs to sell that and tear down that, that horrendous house. The neighbors actually had to put up with it and it's horrible. Any updates?
I don't have anything solid. I talked with Pastor Andy and a little bit of Karen. Both of them are still trying. They haven't given up. I have to, I have to say throughout my total time here, those two have been incredible to work with. Karen Barnett, if you haven't met her, is a saint. She's still helping. She's still, still there, but we have nothing solid. The lean is now running with that property and will be for the foreseeable future.
Other thing is that house on Dolphin Drive, like I mentioned before, it took three years, but they're beautiful house there now. But.
Our code guys will be working closely with Nancy to see what, what resources we have. Obviously, that lean's gotta run for a little bit, but we, we do have some options. We just need to explore those with her and it'll take a few months before we get there.
Okay, the next item I got is kind of for both Bobby Shay and yourself. The Lions Club, they want to come in and build, like I was saying earlier, they're gonna sell off one lot, build a new clubhouse elevated on the west side of Gulf Boulevard. It's gonna look pretty good. But they've got information saying that the city wants them to pave that off-site parking lot. The one right next to this house, this house, it is, let's see, 90th on the south side, 92nd on, and it's between Harrow and West Gulf. It's a shell, sand, dirt parking lot. It's been that way for 100 years.
It has.
I know the city code probably says, oh yeah, you gotta, you gotta pave it, you gotta put in stormwater detention. But the various other cities do have a situation where if it's a intermittently used parking lot, it can be of a pervious surface, grass, shell, sand, whatever. And that's something we might want to look into because that is a unique situation. That parking lot sits empty except on Saturdays and Sundays and maybe sometimes Friday. Something to look into. I know that they do not want to go to the expense of putting in underground stormwater detention vault because that's what they're looking at doing. And those things out there on Sunset Beach will not work. They will fill up full of sand and water and it'll be a waste of time and money. So let's try to work with the Lions Club a little bit. The, anyway, y'all go at it. I've had, I've said enough.
All right, I've got a few, I got a few items, quick items. You know, at this last Tuesday's commission meeting, what the first thing on their agenda was actually hearing a variance case that was on the Gulf side of Gulf Boulevard. And I wanted to get a read on the board here of whether this board would propose to ask the commission for us to start reviewing those cases rather than them coming, going directly to the city commission and one being put onto their agenda. Let us have at least first whack at it and treat it like any other property. If, I don't think there's any reason we should treat the west side of, you know, Gulf Boulevard any different than any other part of the city.
It used to be, it used to be, it used to be where we would see it first, but then all of a sudden there was some type of rule or that was captured and then now it goes straight to the commission. I mean, I, I hear where you're coming from. I'm, I'm good with that. I think that that's probably the right avenue. I mean, we look at everything else within the, the city. You know, I think that there has been some things that go to the commission and they skip us. And I mean, we've had a history of that over the last couple of months, but.
I can speak to that. And I, Jesse just stepped out. He would, he's more well-versed in this. Jesse. It has to do with the ECL line and the county redrawing the ECL line. Am I correct?
Yeah, I realize. I know, I know that's what that particular variance was about, but I'm just talking about in general, all variances on that side.
You took the words out of my mouth.
And I think everything could come to this board.
Is there one specifically that has not?
No, that was, that was just one that came as an, I was giving it as an example. But there's several that in the past that have gone directly to the commission. And there was, I don't think there's really any reason. In fact, you could say that this board is probably more qualified to look at these variances rather than them going to the commission first.
Well, prime example, Chris, was the Treasure Island Resort. This board never got to look at that variance they asked for. And I think if we don't make the final decision, at least we could make a informed decision to the city commission because, oh, there was a couple of them. Oh, you don't have hardship.
Right.
No, you're just reading the rulebook. I mean, that one would be a very tough one because they asked for two additional floors.
Sure.
And it became the heightened density thing again and.
So we could change this so it's treated the same throughout the city. All of it goes to the P and Z.
Like I was gonna say, right now, we are creating a new chapter in LDRs that covers procedures. So one of those things, like if we get a chance, we can do a research of see why the code has always stated variances on a Gulf go to the commission. And in my opinion, if there's not a valid reason, I think we could pull it out of there and then just add those into, just come before the planning.
So to make that change, we'll have to have the commission obviously approve that. So what would be the process for us to do that?
Yeah, it would go before them as like an ordinance, of course, whenever we update the LDR. So they would see that.
So, but, but are you suggesting we wait for the, for the rewrite of this or we could make that motion now?
I mean, I guess we could create, the LPA, I guess you could, as the LPA, you could direct us.
I'm gonna defer to our attorney.
Generally, a planning board does talk about different ordinances that would be needed as a conceptual study or review. I mean, I'm not, I've only been here two days, okay? So give me a little break. But I don't think it would be out of line to suggest perhaps looking into the drafting of something like that. Generally, we don't draft until we get direction from the, the local government, the elected officials. But, you know, I think we hear you, we hear what your need is, and I just want to make sure procedurally we go through the right avenue. But it is a policy that concern that they're raising.
Sure. So I immediately consider timeline. So you make a motion for us to act and create an ordinance. That requires two readings and it requires a posting. So technically that takes about six weeks. We only have one meeting in December, so we're looking at the end of January. We are in the second phase of the LDRs. And, and I would just ask if you use it to our discretion to see which is faster and more efficient.
Yeah, that makes sense if it, since we're going, we could make the change within the LDR.
Look at that. That's a compromise.
And then you could have, and then have, have the city commission obviously approve that LDR. So that makes sense to me.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
In agreement to go that direction.
I'm happy to communicate what that time looks like and set realistic expectations.
I don't think it's a huge hurry. It's not, it's just like a long-term thing.
Sure.
So Chris, the, it was, is it just for variances that we want to have a, because I think site, site plans, site plan still comes here though.
Do they come here first? They do. Okay. So I think it's just very.
So why would site, why would site plans come here and variances?
I'm not sure. Variances go to the commission.
And the Treasure Island Resort, both came before this board. So yeah, we get to see it first, but I don't know why the variances always went directly to the.
It's a good call out. I'm on board with that.
Sounds like we can fix the glitch.
I'm gonna defer to staff that's been here more than five months or six months.
I just phoned a friend, so I talked to Mary Ellen. Procedure chapters is something that this can be addressed through. The bulk of this can be addressed through. I think our code mentions it in a couple of other spots, so there'll probably be some touch up. That is set to come, I believe, before you all soon. Soon is what I got from her. So I'm sure there'll be a little bit of follow-up with legal. We'll follow up with the commission side of things and get that before you.
Yeah. So I kind of fall back on the same answer, whichever is more efficient to move it forward.
Right. Get us back our variances on the beach to the commission meeting or to the planning meeting. They say, get us back our variance meetings. We want them.
But another example I'd like to make is I had a variance request on my street. And at that time, because it involved parking on the street, it was sent directly to the city commission. And they did rule in the correct way, but there was no way that that should have gone to the city commission. It was on my street and I live on the B-side. So we just need to straighten it out. Now, I really don't have any problem just saying, hey, this is our recommendation. I do think sometimes that this board has more expertise than some of the city commission.
No comment.
It's my opinion. I could be wrong.
Take some of the politics out of it.
That, that is, that, yeah. So the recommendation from staff would be that you allow us to look at the timeline. If you did it independently versus what we did through the LDRs, my, my expectation is it's been, it's gonna be pretty close to the finish line either way. But more efficient through the LDR. So if you would just allow us the opportunity to make that, you know, that decision among staff with your interest in mind, we respect, you know, your, your desire on that.
That's good. I just have one other item.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I cut it down to two because I think the other one's taken care of now. You know, we as a board helped pull together the changes that were made with regard to what setback allowances were given for lifting homes or for putting, I guess, a second story on. And this, so this goes into maybe some of the questions Richard had as well. But I know of a couple of cases. One came directly to me, you know, by phone of someone who was involved in a new build right now. And I've been looking around the neighborhood, the whole issue of treating HVAC units that are being. The whole issue of treating HVAC units that are being hung on the side of the homes in, within the setback, being, you know, they're hung up high now, so you see them. Before, they were on the ground, so nobody saw them. Now you see them with all these homes on a new build being raised up. However, the way we've written the rules, we've only allowed for the allowance of the stairwell up to the electric meter or power meter on elevated or, I think, for second story add-ons, not for new home development. And yet, there's some that are going up that way and I think they're running into some problems with maybe plans were, those things weren't included on the original plans and then later they were put up by the folks that were completing the house. I'm of the opinion, and looking at this from a very practical point of view, that having that small stairwell, which is usually then hidden behind a fence, really should be allowed on new builds so that you don't have, that you can fully utilize the lot and you're not, I think, causing anything to look poor against the neighbor. And you're allowing what Duke Power wants to have this stairwell up to that power meter. It's what I think is happening now is we're finding people having to put power meters on the front of the houses or doing something odd to the, of the configuration of the house in order to allow that stairwell up to that power meter. It seems that since we're hanging things off the side that are in view anyway, that are much more obtrusive than a simple stairwell that only goes up five feet or less on the side of the house would be a simple change we could make to allow just better building of new homes within Treasure Island now. I realize that, you know, this is an add-on to what we had allowed for allowances after the storm, but I think it would be a good add. And so I wanted to bring it up today to get really a read on the rest of the board if there was support for that. Or objection.
Well, what I've always said in the past is architects need to sharpen their pencil and not come into this board asking for variance. And pretty much when we did that, because I've been sitting on this board since 2013, they quit. They stopped. We didn't see a variance for Duke Power platform and haven't seen one that I recall for a while. And it can be done.
It can be done, for sure.
And it was just very easy to say, hey, I need one. The one thing I would like to see, and I was just thinking about it, like my next-door neighbor, she built a nice house right next door and her two air conditioning units sit out on the platform in the setback like you're allowed to because it's just there. It's just the weird configuration of those lots down there. But have a situation where you could put the Duke Power platform and the air conditioners, have them both accessed off a set of steps would be really smart.
Right.
And that would be something that I would support because I think that would be a smart way to do it. Because you're gonna have the air conditioning units sticking out in the setback anyway.
It's more obtrusive than the meter itself and certainly more obtrusive than the steps. So I think from a practical point of view, it's, you've said no harm, no foul many times, that's what we should be doing on this board, and that's part of the reason for me bringing it up today.
Well, it's one of those situations where Duke Power, unfortunately, used to access these meters off a ladder. Well, they had a guy fall off and kill himself or something. So now it's a full-blown set of steps. They don't read the meters anymore.
Right, it's crazy.
You know, it's all electronic. Even our water meters are done electronically. So the only time you need it is when you pull that meter, you have to pull hard, fall over backwards and kill yourself. So these stairways have handrails, so you don't do that.
Right.
And, you know, I'm all for safety, there's no doubt about that. But I agree with you, Chris. But if you cannot figure out a way to not have it in the setback, try to incorporate it with the AC units maybe. Because we already allow the encroachment of the AC units, we being in the city.
Yep.
So I appreciate your response. Tell the architects to sharpen their pencils first and come in with that second.
So you're thinking we should just, I guess, not change the rule, but ask people to come in with a variance if they need it?
Come in with a variance if you need it. But if you don't need it, and there's no guarantee, I know Ross is over there shaking his head, he's not gonna give you a variance for it.
Well, that's why I was getting a read on the board and see what reasonable objections there were.
That's what we sit here for. And I mean, I'm glad that you brought it to surface for discussion. And it's not that I'm for it or that I'm against where, the direction that you're trying to go. I mean, I probably would just sit off to the side and just see what happens because there are ways around it. And I mean, part of my foundation is for so many years of sitting on this board where they previously did have issues of these stands, they, like Richard has mentioned, we have made it very clear. So now all of a sudden, we would be changing that. And that, and I understand that, you know, like that's how we want to proceed forward potentially. I just know that there are ways to do a Duke Energy meter without having to do stairs.
Yeah, I was interested when you, so you're saying if you raise the lower level up two feet, which is what most people are doing on the lower level, that that allows you?
I understand that not everybody, I understand that not.
And it's those circumstances that you're actually high enough up now that that meter can be reached without a set of stairs? Is that the idea?
So I made the comment earlier, my plans are, for my personal residence are not approved by any means. They're, but my architect is very familiar with working with the city. I am not going to have to put stairs on the side of my house for my Duke meter to be.
They can stand at grade?
They can stand in grade and read it.
See it, I'll get to it, I guess. What's the rule? Does it have to be less than five feet or something?
I don't know.
From a grade to, okay. Interesting. So there might be some innovative ways of allowing people to do that if they're, if they're, I guess that only works if they're elevating at first level.
It goes back to the same scenario with like the stairs in the front. So like, I understand if we're saying we're not gonna, let me give you this perspective. So if we're not gonna say stairs, if we're gonna say Duke Energy stairs are allowed to go outside of the setback, is that gonna then open it up to the front entry stairs are allowed to go over the?
No, I don't think so. I'm very, I'm thinking this is behind.
I understand that specifically for meter, but for many of years, we have always had that stairs stay inside the setback. So, I mean, that's just, again, I wouldn't, I'm not saying yes or no. I mean, you can bring it up however you want, but.
Yep. Well.
Tell me quick so I'll redo the plans of mine. No, I'm kidding.
So I'm in favor of doing this and allowing a, you know, three-foot, you know, small stairwell that's not only going up so many feet, we'd have to get to the details of that so that it's always behind a fence and it's not intrusive, just to avoid this issue of accessing the electric meter. And it would, I think, allow the architects a little more flexibility on lots in the future, and it might resolve some of the issues of some current homes that have, will have this problem that they'll probably have to come before this board for a variance.
Well, what was pretty obvious years gone by was it was a second thought. Oh crap, I needed a Duke Power, oh yeah, I'll just run the setback. And I will come in, oh shoot, after the fact, and we'll ask the board with it, and you know, they're rubber stamped. Those guys will do anything. I get that all the time.
Which, we know that's not true, so that's.
Not anymore.
We're gonna have to hire, we're gonna have to hire security for Jesse because of the amount of people that he has told to go back and do it again.
Not a bad idea.
Seriously, I mean, there's gotta be a long list of people that have come in here and we have told them to go back and do it again.
Well, I'll make a motion that we allow a three-foot stairwell only for the point of reaching access to the electric meter on the side setback of a new build.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Chris Downing.
A second.
You say new build specifically, sir?
New construction, I think a limit on it of five feet in height.
That's fair, yep.
I could tell you from my perspective as a builder, there's a lot of new homes that need to be rebuilt in Treasure Island. I know we talk about density and developers being able to maximize, you know, on the return. Building a house three feet less on a 50-foot long, you're building it 150 to 300 square feet less. And with the cost of building right now, that really brings the economics down on the cost of building a new home. And with the small lots and side setbacks that we have, it is the biggest obstacle in designing a home right now in Treasure Island.
But I want to amend your amendment, your motion rather to include, I don't have any problem with it if you incorporate for both of them. Because I used to work on the heat and air conditioning units, and there's nothing worse than having to work on one off a ladder.
Yeah, I'm happy to amend that too, that it would include access to the HVAC unit on the side.
Is three feet sufficient?
The Duke requires three feet by five-foot platform.
For the air conditioner?
Yes, they are.
They don't require anything for the air conditioning. That can hang.
So there, like there's a property on Tarpon Drive that has the Duke meter on the front step, like you basically, the front steps are in the setback and the meter is right there in the front, and it's just covered with like some Louver closets. I mean, that is a simple, that is a simple solution that's out there, you know, when it comes to, I mean, yeah, you could put it in the front. And there's a house on Dolphin where it's in the back, you know, in the back patio. It doesn't have any separate stairs. I mean, I think about the wood be, you know, like the, I know you're a builder, but I mean, in five years, these things get rotted out. I mean, it's not like people are spending a bunch of money on putting nice stairs in. There's really only one house that I know of.
The requirement is that it be pressure-treated lumber.
Yeah, I mean, the house that Lubkey built on Dolphin, whatever, two or three years ago, you look at those steps and it's just, I mean, they're, whatever. Yeah, I'm fine.
They have to be code, yeah, of course, for step requirements per Florida building code.
Okay, we got a motion by Chris Downing, a second by Mark, and an amendment by me which says you gotta incorporate, if you're gonna do these steps, you're gonna do both the AC units. And a lot of times on these bigger houses, it's more than one. And, but it'll include the meter platform and however many AC units it comes to be. How's that sound?
Just to be clear, is that saying that they, if they're going to be allowed to do it, they have to incorporate the AC units?
That is correct.
What if the AC units are not able to be located to a practical distance from each other?
Then they always come in here for variance. You know.
Is this gonna have to go, is this gonna have to go in front of the commission for like approval?
Oh, yeah.
This would be a new ordinance.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The only thing I want to look into on this one is to make sure that there are no conflicts with the Florida building code on some of our smaller setback areas. So I do want to do a little bit of research. But just to make sure that I have it right, we're gonna do an ordinance that allows an encroachment for new construction that is only the size of what Duke requires, no extended platforms, and includes access to the ACs if it's on that side of the house.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have everything you want.
Five feet from grade, three foot stairwell.
Not only if it's on that side of the house at any time. I mean, I don't want some guy to say, oh, my air conditioning unit's over here and my meter's on the other side of the house. Okay, you can come in and ask for variance.
Okay.
And you might get it unless Ross Sanchez is still on the board.
What's the smallest, what's the smallest side yard setback in Treasure Island?
We have none. Five feet is next up from that, so.
So if you have a five-foot setback, three-foot stairs, there's, let's leave two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What if you have none?
So if a fire firefighter has to carry a ladder through the backyard up in the air and he's got two feet of wiggle room and there's.
Yeah, look at that house we just approved. I mean, that is, that area is tight as can be down there.
So I'm actually, I would be happy to amend my motion to only include those areas that have 10-foot side setbacks.
Well, make it seven and a half.
Sorry, seven and a half.
Seven and a half to 10.
Seven and a half and above setbacks.
Most of the setbacks in Treasure Island are seven and a half foot sides.
Or 10, right. So I'm happy to amend it to that.
Just to be clear, we're at three-foot stairwell, five foot from grade, including electric meter, heat, HVAC, and only seven and a half side setback.
Or more.
Or more, less must come for a variance.
Right. And that it would, but you could include, it's a three-foot with a five-foot platform.
The minimum requirements.
The minimum requirements, yeah.
Minimum requirement, yep.
So an area like Sunset Beach, I mean, doesn't have seven and a half, five foot, they're gonna have to come in for variance.
They'll have to come up with better ways to do it. They wouldn't necessarily be able to do it, not necessarily a variance, but they would have to do some of the things that Ross said, be more innovative about putting it on the back or the side. Yeah.
So I'm, I am. Now we're treating different residential areas with different.
I think we're doing what we can for those that it works.
The thing is, it depends on how, put this way, there's different setbacks all over this city. I mean, people ask me all the time, what's my side yard setback? I got, I got no idea. Five, seven and a half or 10? Take your pick.
I would just ask before we move forward that we ask the city attorney for her legal opinion.
Well, as far, as far as the actual language or, because this is language that you're going to put in the draft LDRs that are gonna come back to you. So we'll go back and work on something. Hopefully, it is what you intend, but there's been a lot of discussions, so it's gonna be a little challenging to actually put that into words. But we will do our best attempt to do that and bring it back to you. You'll have the opportunity to comment on it.
That's fair, yeah. I mean, we're making the motion for you to draft it and.
To include it in there, yes.
Do you want it included in the LDR updates or new ordinance?
Whichever is faster.
Whichever is faster.
Okay.
Okay, I think you're out of vote.
Okay. We're all ready? We have massaged that one a bit, so let's have a roll call vote then.
Gary Potenciano?
And we're talking new units again, right? Just to make sure. Okay, yes.
Ross Sanchez?
No.
Mark Shaduski?
Yes.
Chris Downing?
Yes.
Grant Smith?
No.
Marvin Chavlin?
Yes.
Richard Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, what was your last issue, Chris?
I lowered it down to two. The other one I was talking directly to Jesse about and that was.
Okay. Well, I wasn't able to figure out that reduced front yard setback to the amount of fill, and I sent you that information.
Yeah, that's interesting. I don't know if everybody understands. You've mentioned it earlier, Jesse, but.
You just need to read that verbiage and it's on my phone.
Yeah, it's a little complicated.
It's confusing.
But it does allow, yeah, some of the stairwells in the front to extend into the setback if you're raising that first level in the formula for that, which many, I don't think many of the architects are actually aware of that. And maybe that, you know, that's still in place because we're still applying the TMM rules, even though we're trying to simplify that.
We are not.
Oh, you're not applying that? So if you're not, does that mean they can't use the TMM?
The TMM was repealed in the meeting.
Yes.
Where I was acting city manager.
So that means that rule does not apply then?
Correct. We went back to simple drainage.
The height adjustment factor is written into the code.
We'll have to get an opinion on that because I had a meeting with the city manager where it is not repealed and it is being used as reference material. So we need to get a clarification on that. What Gary Volonak and I are doing is writing a summary and basically taking 134 pages of lots of verbiage and reducing it into probably about a 10-page document that gives the bullet points.
But Bobby, I think you're correct, though, that it, what it was actually taken off for residential use temporarily. I think it was excluded for a period of time.
The order, the motion was to repeal and replace. So if I can have Jackie step up, we created a new checklist with a simple drainage plan. The manual that he is speaking of still exists and it's still referenced to in our code, and those are changes that we have to make. It will be replaced with a summary versus the manual, which is the beast that everyone had a hard time with, but we are at simple reviews right now. now.
We need to get a clarification on that, because I had a meeting with the city manager with Gary and I, talking about the revisions, and I said, wow, I hate the TMM, I don't think it was well-written, there's a lot of good reference material in there, so let's put it on the back shelf and keep it. But this is what this small summary that you're, that you've been asking about, Chris, is for.
And Gary sent me a copy of that, so I have it.
I have a copy. Oh, you did get a copy?
I have a copy now.
Yeah, I mean, all it was, was a FHA grading lot standards that I found from Orange County, Florida, and we took a bunch of different ordinances from various cities and combined them all and modified it and massaged a little more to make it applicable to Treasure Island.
And so I thought, I understood you were basically making this be a guide for the guide, if you will. And if, but is that, that's, I guess, what we need to get clarification on going forward, because at this point, it's repealed for residents.
Correct. The order was, the, the direction of the commission was to stop reviewing based on TMM requirements. We went back to simple drainage with a new checklist. We are working on modifying the code, which comes through our second phase of LDR, but we still have a manual that's referenced.
Nope, it won't be second phase of LDRs.
It'll be first.
We've, we've broken the connection for single-family homes and for seawalls for right now. And that's where the emergency ordinance comes in, and we operate every 60 days, hopefully they re-review that. Gary and Richard have written the drainage plan to replace TMM. So all references, all, everything, TMM will go away. Right now, we have TMM in place, because the commercial drainage standards.
Right.
That's not as straightforward as a, a single-family home, which we've learned from you two telling us. But the, the commercial side is still used for TMM.
Right.
It's, it's single-family and seawalls that is not right now. The whole thing will be replaced as we move forward.
Today, you're operating without the TMM, but with the guides of that a sealed, signed and sealed drainage plan.
That's correct.
Accompanyes all permits that would require them.
That's correct.
Including seawalls.
That's correct, yes.
And the main, main thing is, Chris, the biggest hang-up was farming this stuff out to various engineering firms. It was just taking way too damn long and they.
No, I think it's a positive thing that we're doing, simplifying this, and that's what everyone has asked for, and it'll make it your job, well, maybe not your new job, but your assessor's job or whatever.
You guys will be seeing those first, that'll come back through here, but separate from phase two of LDR, so you'll be seeing those ordinances not too long from now.
For new home builds that also people are wanting to a seawall, you all are still most likely going to require a site plan slash drainage plan for that new home before a seawall permit is issued if they're lifting both seawall and house.
They're gonna have to do them in, working together.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you already knew that, Ross.
No, I just wanted to make sure other people know, because I don't want them to live in the hell that I've been living in for the last year.
Those two pieces, it's, it's challenging.